Good evening. My name is Becky Ruby. I'm the third ward alderwoman and I'll be the chair of this week's committee of the whole meeting. The date is Monday, August 14th, 2017. I'd like to welcome everyone to City Hall this evening. Let the record show that all aldermen are present. Item two on the agenda is to approve COW minutes from July 24th and July 31st. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Cummings, seconded by Kilburg. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is it unanimous? Thank you. All right, and items of business, number three on the agenda. Item A this evening is recommend approval of special event liquor licenses for Fioras at 317 South Third, Little Traveler at 404 South Third, and Geneva Wine Cellars at 216 Fulton. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Bruno and seconded by McGowan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is it unanimous? Okay, on to 3B. Recommend approval of special event application for Penrose Brewing Celebration of Funk, September 30th, 2017, and waive the application fee and surety bond requirements for itinerant vendors. Do I have a motion?
So.
Moved by Maladra and seconded by Kilburg. All those in favor, oh, sorry.
Perhaps somebody's here that would like to speak to the issue name, give a plug for the event or anything.
This is my whole posse here.
Can you introduce yourselves?
I'm Brad Novak. I'm one of the partners of Penrose Brewing. This is one of my partners here, Tom Quarter. We're looking to have a beer festival on September 30th that we are calling Celebration of Funk. We will invite 30 breweries from across the country to kind of participate with us, that all kind of participate in that same kind of wild funky style. All of it's going to support the LLK Foundation. Scott Vog is our partner from the LLK Foundation, which is all about cancer research and funding. And we're looking for the support of the city to do this event.
Thank you.
Questions? Anything?
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. So this is Saturday, so that explains, so funk is not music, funk is the style of beer.
I will let Tom Quarter explain funk. He is our head brewer.
I don't know that we need to get into that.
Yeah, just a certain style of beer, yeah. And it's one that we do a lot of at Penrose, so.
So, but more cogently, so September 30th, what are the hours of this event going to be?
The festival will go from 1:00 to 6:00. From 1:00 to 2:00 will be what we are referring to as a VIP admitting, so there'll be 100 people in that group. They'll get in about an hour earlier to make sure that they get the best beers. And then we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 other tickets being sold for general admission that will go from 2:00 to 6:00. And then the festival ends at 6:00.
So can I learn to love funky beer?
If you don't already do, you will. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Actually, on the application, it's 2:00 to 7:00. You can do that if you're somewhere. You got another hour.
What's that?
You got another hour.
Yeah, I think we had a, I think the original one said 2:00 to 7:00. This is actually, and I think we sent some emails back and forth, that's a 1:00 to 6:00, but, yeah.
Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Alderman Ruby. I think it's such a great idea that you're doing this, to raise money for a really good cause.
Absolutely.
Where can people purchase their tickets?
We'll have tickets online, so they'll start probably, not this week, but the following week, on Thursday, we'll do them all online.
Okay, and what is the website that they can go to for anyone who's interested in attending this event?
We'll link it through the, through all the Penrose social media, but it'll be on brown paper tickets. So if you just follow either our website or our Facebook or Twitter, it'll all be posted there with a direct link.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
I think she was fishing for PenroseBrewing.com.
That too.
Alderman Burkhardt?
Thank you. This is probably for Brad. So, you know, Alderman Bruno and I've had some neighbors reach out to us recently feeling a little concerned about some noise and parking issues at Penrose. You know, they say they kind of thought it was a tasting room and you're increasingly having some of these big events. This sounds like a pretty big event. I mean, how are you going to handle parking? How are you going to make sure that these people actually leave at 7:00 in a safe way? You do butt up right with the residential area, so I'd like to hear about how you're going to keep this kind of managed, because it sounds pretty big.
Yeah, so we did get an email from Alderman Bruno and not only discuss that internally, because that's the first ever complaint or issue that we've ever heard, discussed it internally as a group, obviously informed our staff that there may have been a neighbor that didn't like some of the events. You know, our focus really hasn't changed. Yeah, our business has changed because we've gotten a lot more acceptance from the community and yeah, there's more people there, but our hours are, we still close, you know, Friday and Saturday we open till, are open till 10:00, but every other night we close at 9:00 o'clock, so, you know, there really isn't a whole lot of commotion over there, right? So, we do have, the Geneva Police Department are going to help us with that day and, you know, and helping us control people and traffic and whatnot. You know, the city's been kind enough, they're going to kind of block off the south side of Stevens for parking and whatnot, so there won't be parking on that side. It'll all be on the north side. We do have a shuttle bus that we're going to be operating at the Geneva train station to take any patrons that are coming via the city or the metro to our event and whatnot. So, we're doing everything we can to kind of be quasi-good neighbors. And even to the extent where we are invited, we're taking that whole neighborhood community now, we've got a letter crafted that we'll send out to all those people, not only in our industrial park, but to that surrounding area, let them know what we're doing. We're going to kind of have like a little party for all those guys a couple weeks before to kind of make sure that we're all neighborly, but that kind of took us, Alderman Bruno's email kind of took us by surprise that we had a complaint, because we've never had anybody vocalize that to us directly.
Yeah, and I think the neighborhood in general's excited about you being there and welcoming.
Thank you.
It just sounds like maybe there's some tweaking that needs to be done and it sounds like you're working on it, so I'm glad to hear that.
We're doing everything we can to make sure we're good neighbors.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Alderman Kilburg?
In the executive summary, it references the city council.
Microphone, please.
In the executive summary, it references waiving the $100 application fee. Is that contained within the motion then that's before the council this evening then?
Yes, that was added.
Okay. Does that set a precedent then as far as other applications? Have we waived?
We have waived in the past for some of the city festivals and those kinds of things. This is for the itinerant vendors, so the groups that they're bringing in from the outside, we're waiving that fee that they'll be selling items, but we'll still collect the sales tax.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, is there a motion to approve?
We did hang up.
Oh, sorry. Oh, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay, on to item 3C. Recommend draft resolution authorizing acceptance of the 2017 Employee Benefit Plan renewal effective November 1st, 2017.
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Burkhardt. Is there a discussion or questions? Alderman Rodecky?
Thank you. Stephanie, I know we've corresponded a little bit over the last couple of days. I guess I just have a couple of questions, and one is from the broker. Do we have?
Boomer Whipple's here, representing our broker, so I'll ask him to come forward.
Good to see everybody. Hey, good to see you. Yeah, I guess I have one question. I've already raised it to Stephanie, I'm guessing she's probably already run it by you, but one of the, I thought one of the goals and one of the objectives with us controlling the cost of our insurance was to look at alternate coverages, particularly high deductible coverages. Correct. And an attempt to lower it, control it, keep our premium at least flat from where it was. Right. Stephanie, it indicated to me that we do have a plan in place, that zero employees have opted for that. And when I looked at the premium for employee plus one, I think it was 15-something, I've got it in the packet here, maybe 15, just under $1,600. Correct. And I guess my question to you is that my wife and I both have single payers with Blue Cross, the same coverage, the same company. With a bronze plan, our premium is under $1,400. Correct. So why would a, in a group setting, why wouldn't the premium be more competitive on a large deductible or high deductible plan?
No, it's a good question, and it depends upon, first of all, the marketplace, the individual marketplace. You're on a bronze individual ACA compliant plan.
Right.
Versus a employer-sponsored group plan. Your bronze plan, I'm sure, has a deductible probably in the $6,000 range.
You're getting warm, yeah.
Yeah. Where the deductible for this plan was, is $2,500. So it's a different level, but it's a good question, and it was really the councils, with the help of the council last year, that we put that in as a fourth option. We recognize, you know, the city is blessed with great HMO enrollment, and you have two HMO plans, and you've got about 70 people on your PPO and about 67 people on the HMO. We've got a lot of clients that would kill to have that type of enrollment. The HMO is the most managed care out there, so we don't want to drive people away from the HMO plans. We put this plan in place because you have your PPO plan, we wanted to offer an alternative in case there were some individuals who didn't mind a higher deductible eventually, but didn't like the idea of having to pick a primary care physician and going to a smaller network.
But there still is the available option for higher deductibles, higher co-pays that you could offer for a group like this.
You could. There's no co-pays in a qualified high deductible health plan. That's one of the things that keeps people from going into a high deductible HSA plan is, the two most used benefits on anybody's plan is the office visit co-pay and the prescription drug card. And if you were to go into a qualified high deductible health plan, you don't have those. They're still covered, but they track towards the deductible. And we talked last year, even though that we didn't think there'd be potentially any participation, or it would be pretty limited, we thought it was a good opportunity to at least put it in place, continue to educate them over the course of the years. We've got two employee meetings set up in September, just to talk about what the high deductible HSA plan is. So it was never going to be lower than the two HMO plans, but it is a lower alternative than your current PPO plan.
So basically then you set up the high deductible so that the premium was somewhat in the neighborhood for the other plans that were being offered?
You got it.
Okay.
Yep. And the nice thing about having the plan in place is, Blue Cross allows for us to continue to offer it as an option, even though there's right now no enrollment. And even if it continues to be limited, we can still offer it as an option. It was more strategic down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess there's a second half of the discussion then, but thank you, thank you for this.
Yeah.
Again, Stephanie and I had some correspondence back and forth. I think some of it was shared with the council, thank you. One of the goals and the objectives, and just probably nine months ago or so when we had this conversation, was, I thought that the, it was clear that the spirit and intent was moving forward with the budget with the employee health care was to leave it flat, no more than the previous, the previous amount that was expended, that we wished to keep it flat. The proposal that we have before us now is a 3.8% increase. It's not flat. Now, I got your explanation earlier that the actual dollars may be flat, depending upon who opts in, who opts out, do we have married people join, do we have people leave us? I understand that that's in flux, but those are things that we can't control. You know, it was, it was my belief at the time that the spirit and intent was for us to do what we could do to manage the health care costs, to leave them flat, not to leave it to chance that perhaps we would have employees come and go. So, I'm not in favor of approving this at this point, just because I thought that that was pretty clear that that's what we wanted to do, so.
In January, when we had the discussion, we talked about that, and I explained that the way we would budget is leaving it flat, is leaving employees on the current plan that they were on at the current cost they were paying.
Right.
So that's what we did. We budgeted based on everybody who was currently on a plan, the current plan they were on, and at that base pay. So as I explained then, from, from...
So if that was true though, then we'd be 3.8% above.
But again, because you're constantly changing your employee census.
Right.
That's always in flux, and it's always in flux. It's not, even if you budgeted X number, today we could, we could say that we're at that number, but six months down the road, that may be a totally different number because of your employee makeup.
Right. And that was understood, I believe at that time.
So we did keep the intent of, and exactly how I explained it in January at that budget meeting, was that we were not budgeting an increase for insurance based on the employees that were taking coverage and what plan they were on.
Correct. So, so all things being equal, if we, nobody knows what that was going to be. We all understood that. The assumption would be then that if we had all the same people, all the same coverages, that we would remain flat, zero, but it's a 3.8% increase. I mean, perhaps, I don't know, perhaps I'm the only one that was mistaken, but I thought it was pretty clear that that was the spirit and intent behind it.
And again, that's why I explained at that meeting how I understood it, and there was consensus there, so, you know, I think if you're, we were talking dollars, we weren't talking plan design premium, that the premium is zero, we were talking the dollars.
Right.
And so, just like last year, we had a small increase, but it came in under the budget.
Right, right. But with the same logic, we could easily be then far in excess of 3.8% due to uncontrolled circumstances.
Even with zero, we could be in excess of 3.8%.
Right. See, and then I thought that the high deductible plans that we would, we're going to explore would be an attempt to reduce some of the premium. The coverage I think that the employees enjoy right now is gold coverage, is it?
They don't... Yeah, I'm sorry. For this market segment, they don't have the ACA compliant standards of gold, platinum, silver, or bronze.
If you're talking in my terms, what would it be, based upon my bronze plan?
Well, the individual market is much different in extreme flux right now, based on what's going on in Washington, but it's probably similar to a silver or gold plan? Correct.
Yeah. And see, I think that was a big part of the discussion that we had in January was, it's very nice coverage, it's very expensive coverage, the employee co-pay is, the employee contribution is 10% for an individual, 15% for family. They were very attractive plans, and that, you know, we were looking for ways to control those costs. You know, we had a long discussion just a couple of weeks ago about revenue streams and that, you know, we wanted to be sure that we looked at all available options before we looked at additional revenue streams. And I just think that this is one that we looked at. I thought that it was pretty clear that we didn't wish to increase the expenditure, so, based upon what my understanding was right now, based upon the financial situation that the, that the city is in right now, that we reviewed in great detail the other day, it's, it's not possible for me to support an increase with the premium. When we have available options that are within our control to do that, and I think it's, I think it's my responsibility, I think, to the people that I serve, to explore those a little bit closer. I feel as though we did a lot of talking about them and we really didn't come up with anything, but really what the same continued course that we've taken over the years, so. Anyway, thank you very much.
Alderman Burkhardt?
Can we talk more about the high deductible option? I mean, who would be the obvious employee to choose something like that? Some of young, healthy, who doesn't think they'll go to the doctor necessarily the whole year?
That's really what it has turned out to be, yeah. Typically for the younger individuals who don't like the idea of having to pick a primary care physician. I guess, we go back to the HMO plans that you offer, those are the most managed care programs that you can have, those are the lowest cost. Those options that are not in, are not available on the individual market, they're, they have an HMO option available, but there are some deductibles involved. With the HMO plans, it's about, you know, 40% of the PPO network, much smaller networks, employees have to pick a primary care physician, they have to direct all their care through the primary care physician, and then if they wanted to see a specialist, they would get referred from the primary care physician into the specialist. You have two HMO plans, the HMO Illinois and the Blue Advantage Entrepreneur. For the HSA, the high deductible plan, typically what you're going to see is somebody who doesn't like the idea of having to pick a primary care physician, doesn't like the idea of the smaller network, they want total freedom, because at the end of the day, a qualified high deductible HSA plan is still a PPO plan, so you have access to the broad network. So, those people who would potentially go into a high deductible HSA plan are those people who don't like the idea of having to pick a primary care physician and want total freedom, and are also okay with the fact, you mentioned it, that there is a higher deductible, there are no office visit co-pays, there are no prescription drug card co-pays, but they're okay with that. They'd like, they'd like the idea of having the freedom of choice of the larger network, they like the lower premium that they would pay versus the traditional PPO plan. So that's typically the people that you'll see signing up for those plans. What you can't control is those individuals who sign up for that type of program, you can't force them to actually then take advantage of the HSA like I'm sure you're doing and putting money into the HealthSaves account. There are limits in terms of how much money you can put into a HealthSaves account, but you basically nailed it with your question. Typically what you're seeing right now is younger individuals, but with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, you've got a pretty decent HMO network, and for them right now, that's even lower cost than the high deductible HSA plan. So, for the city of Geneva, the individuals that we thought may, and potentially in the future may opt into that plan, are those who are on the PPO who are looking for lower cost.
I like that we get to keep it as an option, even though no one's...
Exactly.
...so far, so that's good. For the city to lower its costs under the current, our current structure, we would have to, employees would have to pick up a higher amount of their premiums, is that the obvious way?
There's really two options at the end of the day. I mean, you don't, you either pick up more of the premium in terms of the contribution, or you, you take a look at the actual benefits themselves. And we did tweak the benefits two years ago by bumping up the specialist co-pay from $20 to $40 in the, in the HMO as a way to try and reduce the increase. I mean, the increase this year is a lot lower than it's been over the last three years, so usually you save those types of mechanisms for years when you're looking at double-digit increases.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
Well, you know, thank, thank you for that overview. You know, my position is, you know, to control your premiums by bumping up the specialist co-pay or from $20 to $40 is like two deck chairs blown off the Titanic. I mean, that's not a big, it's not going to have a big impact on something. You know, it was always my belief, and I thought that it was for the majority of the members of the council who voted for the budget at that time, that we would look to means to control this budgeted, this very large budgetary expense through our, either increased deductibles, co-pays, or employee contributions. Those are the only ways to do it. They're painful things. I thought that we were at least going to stay even by using those tools. What's being presented today is, we were looking for change. I thought it was very clear that a majority of the aldermen at that time wanted a change in direction with having more control over it. What's being presented today is the exact same thing that's been presented for the last five years. So I don't think we've, by approving this, we take any step in a direction towards controlling this expense. It's yet the same thing another year and another year, so, thank you.
I have a question for you. I know there are many, many variables, but is there an average employee contribution percentage?
There are national averages. It depends upon the size, it depends upon, I would say that you're right in the ballpark of average.
Okay.
At the 10% and 15% for your type of...
Number of employees.
Number of employees, type of business, yeah, you're in the ballpark.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alderman Cummings?
I would favor this if, if it came out as flat versus, I, my, my understanding was, we were going to come out flat and yes, there'd be variability, because people leave, get hired, marry, divorce, have kids, that sort of thing. Flat, but understanding there'd be variability. I can't support this. It doesn't, it doesn't give a good answer to the people that have been contacting me about cutting costs and lowering taxes in the city of Geneva in light of how fast our other expenses are going up. So I can't support this as it stands. Thank you.
Okay, let's do a roll call on this. Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Gene McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Eight to two. Okay, the motion carries. On to item 3D. Recommend draft resolution approving final PUD for Riverbank Crossing. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by McGowan, seconded by Rodecky. Any discussion or questions? Alderman Bruno?
Director de Groot or, or the presenter, this is fundamentally the same plan that was originally approved by this council?
That's correct. The preliminary and final PUD was approved last February for David Weekly project. David Weekly decided not to move forward with the, with the project, and Taylor Morrison is coming in looking to do a very similar product, same number of units, townhomes in the same layout, slightly different building elevation, slightly different landscape plans, but in line with the preliminary PUD approval that was granted last February.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The, I've kind of wrestled with this, because of my position on the housing we need over, you know, within Geneva has evolved and how, how much I'm looking to push back. I like the size of these and that they're not gigantic, but they do not offer any one-story living option, no first-floor masters. It's elevator, stair-dependent living. I really think we need to keep our eyes on housing for our aging population. That being said, this was basically approved once before. It's not unreasonable to think that this, that the developer would expect that this should be a slam dunk. Regardless of my vote, it would pass, but it's, my, my interest is in, in a completely different housing stock than, than townhomes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's do a roll call on this one as well. Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Unanimous? On to 3E. Recommend draft resolution supporting the Fox River Water Trail Initiative. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Burkhardt, a second?
Second.
Seconded by McGowan. Any questions? Alderman Marks?
I'm not sure who to address this to. Does this, I just want to make sure that, that Water Trail Initiative, does, does it go through residential areas or butt up against residential land?
Well, it's the Fox River.
That's what I thought.
So it's the whole river from Wisconsin all the way down, and basically it's just a designation of the river as a national water trail, which, which provides opportunities for federal dollars, more tourism, those kinds of things.
But, but it doesn't do anything to...
No, it doesn't affect...
That's all I want to...
Correct. And it doesn't affect what we can do with the river.
Beat me to the next question, thank you.
I know.
That's all. She's now, yeah, reading minds.
Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. Can someone just clarify for me, when would this designation, or whatever you call it, be eligible for some federal dollars. What are some changes that residents would see?
I, I don't think they'd really see any changes, per se. Again, it would be on maps, be designated as an, so there are people out there who do tourism based on traveling to national parks and national trails. So, this would now be on the federal maps as a national trail to go and see what's in this area. I do not know timeframe. This has been about a two-year process even just getting to this point, because they were looking at a shorter part of the river and then decided, why look small when we can look big? And that's why it's going all the way from Wisconsin all the way down. So, I don't know when it will come into effect, but really the, the biggest thing is that you bring, you bring people to your community, so they'll come, they'll check out the river, they'll come and shop, they'll dine, they'll see how cute Geneva is, they'll want to come back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we can just have a voice vote on this. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Passes unanimous? Item 3F. Recommend draft resolution endorsing the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Greenest Region Compact II. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Marx and seconded by McGowan. Any questions? Voice vote on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. It's unanimous. Okay. Item 3G. Recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of an electric utility easement at 940 and 950 Western Avenue.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Marx and seconded by Bruno. Any questions? Voice vote on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Unanimous. Item 3H. Recommend approval of certificate of completion for Cooper Woods and 1708 Kaneville Road. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. Any questions? All right, a voice vote on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. It's unanimous. Item 3I. Recommend draft resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Geneva and the county of Kane for household hazardous waste collection services.
So moved.
Moved by Marx. Is there a second? Seconded by Swanson. Discussion?
Not, not more of a discussion, but I, I think it's a great program. Maybe Rich, you want to come forward and, and explain this so that citizens know how this works? Because I don't think a lot of people understand that we have this program. And I think it's, it's great. And I think, and I, and I do give you a lot of cadews for working with the Kane County to get this back in, in the line again. I think it's great.
The Household Hazardous Waste Collection Program, or also called Curbside Collection Program, has been in place now for over three years. Uh, it was formerly connected by Waste Management Curbside Services, and the intent and goal of this program is to basically get hazardous materials out of the refuse stream and not keep them out of the landfills. And it allows for the proper and legal collection and the proper and legal disposal of a variety of hazardous substances which are included within the IGA. Uh, most notably, the only significant deviation from the previous contract is that latex paint now is not, uh, included within the Household Hazardous Waste Program, because with proper preparation, enamel-based paint can be disposed of through your standard refuse stream. Uh, this provides, uh, this actually allows for the re-institution of the curbside collection program, and, uh, will save the residents a trip of having to drive down to Naperville and to dispose of the material there. The, uh, Household Hazardous Waste Collection is actually a relatively straightforward program. We've averaged just under 140 residents, uh, per year over the last three years. It's definitely gained in popularity. Uh, the, uh, information on the program is actually on the city's webpage, but when the contractor opted out of their third-year contract, we disabled that link to the webpage, uh, so residents wouldn't keep calling the contractor and get confused. But basically, the process is if you have household hazardous waste that you need to dispose of, it's, uh, basically, for lack of a better word, a, a don't ask, don't tell policy. You contact our vendor, the vendor then sends you a clear plastic bag with their logo on it, and it's clear so the operator, collector can actually see what they're collecting. You place the material inside the bag, you're notified by the agent when they're going to be at your, uh, curbside to collect it. You put the material out the night before, they come in first thing in the morning and pick it up, and away it goes. Uh, there is no charge to, well, the, the way this program is funded is it's funded through our refuse and recycling contract, uh, and that, that contractor actually pays the city a certain amount of funds. In this case, it's $20,000 per year, per fiscal year. And that money is then used to pay the contractor for the Household Hazardous Waste Curbside Collection Program. So, there, the cost to the residents is still, I guess, through the refuse fund, which they pay for their, uh, regular...
But there's no additional cost for making that phone call and getting that bag sent?
Correct. From the, from the resident's perspective, there is no cost whatsoever for making the call. Um, one of the questions I, I think had been asked earlier was if we had seen repeat users of the program, and we, we simply haven't. Um, at least nothing I'm aware of, it's not something we had been tracking actively. Uh, but, again, with 140 residents per year, and that pretty mu, does a pretty good job, I'm sorry, 140 residents per month, I was right the first time.
Yeah, you were right the first time.
I'm confusing myself now.
You're okay.
At 140 collections per year, let's keep it that way. Um, it's, it's not a vast majority of the population that's taking advantage of the program, but we typically do utilize the entire $20,000. The hope is that by pulling the latex paint out of this program now, that more material will be able to be collected, because latex paint is the heaviest of all the components that they collect, and therefore, it was using up a lion's share of the budget. And because now with latex paint, there are guidelines on the Kane County Recycles webpage, run by Jennifer Jarlin, uh, but, uh, basically you can either leave the lid off of the paint can and let it air dry until it solidifies, or you can fill the can with kitty litter or with sand, and that will expedite the drying process. And then once the material is solid, you can dispose of it through your refuse container.
But oil base still goes into these bags, correct?
Oil base is definitely considered a, a hazardous waste.
And this will also collect batteries? Even automobile batteries or just regular household batteries? Do you know that? Just, and if you don't, that's fine. We can look it up on site.
Well, you can, you can actually dispose of your batteries and probably, there's not a lot of people that know this either, uh, you can bring in your household batteries, uh, and even lithium-ion batteries to Public Works. There's a bin in our foyer.
I didn't know that.
Where they can be disposed of. And also, there's guidelines on the Kane County Recycles page for disposal of lead-based or water, uh, water-based batteries.
Okay, thank you. It, it sounds like a great program. And again, I do like that you reached out to the Kane County to make sure that this still existed for our residents, because...
It was, it was a good collaborative effort, and, and kudos to Jennifer Jarlin and, uh, the Kane County Office of Environmental Resources. They, they really worked a lot to, uh, make this happen for us.
Good, thank you.
That'd be Ken Anderson, by the way, if I'm going to be plugging people to county.
Okay, Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just so I'm clear, I want to make sure I have recent information, and this made me think of it. Um, fluorescent bulbs, uh, I don't want to name the, what I think is the retail business that collects those, is a collecting location. Do you, do you know that that's still, uh, an active, that, that might have been a Kane County thing?
The Kane County Recycling Page has, and again, it's always go to the webpage for the latest and current information. I know at one point, there was a large retailer in the city of Geneva that would collect those. Whether or not they still do, I can't vouch for it.
Which is why I didn't mention it, because I... Oh, they do?
Who was it for?
Okay, Ace Hardware, is it?
Oh, I thought it was Home Depot.
Oh.
Not 100%, though.
Geneva Ace Hardware will take them.
Yes.
According to the website. But always call first.
Yes.
And check the webpage.
On a related note, um, the police department takes prescription drugs at any time as well.
Correct. That is outside of the Household Hazardous Waste Program. Um, in the very beginning, uh, there was some guidance as how you could dispose of them through this program, but due to a variety of reasons, they have pulled that out of this program now. But they do take sharps, for example, uh, which are needles for home health care injections.
All right, thank you, Rich.
You're welcome.
All right, I think we can do a roll call. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, all right, it passes, it's unanimous. All right, on to 3J. Recommend draft resolution authorizing bid, award, and contract to IHC Construction Companies in the amount not to exceed $10,349,000 for wastewater treatment plant improvements. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. Any questions? Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, unanimous. Okay, that brings us to new business, item four on the agenda. Does, are, any aldermen have anything to add, to bring up tonight? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I would just like to pass along a compliment that, um, a neighbor, um, wanted me to mention. Um, Public Works has been trimming trees along the parkway in the Fourth Ward, um, on Wakefield Avenue and Cambridge Drive, and, um, the resident wanted to say that the trees look amazing, um, Public Works has just done an excellent job. I know myself, I've, I stopped a crew at one point on Cambridge Drive to ask them about their tree trimming, and, um, they were very courteous, very professional, explained, you know, happily answered my question, so I just wanted to pass along that compliment to you. Thank you.
Okay, anyone in the public? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Marx, seconded by Swanson. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, do I get a hold again? Okay, great. We're now having a special meeting, um, committee of the whole.
City Council.
City Council, sorry. Do we start with a roll call? Okay, can I have a roll call, please? Mike Bruno?
Here.
Tara Burkhardt?
Here.
Donald Cummings?
Here.
Becky Ruby?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Jean McGowan?
Here.
Jim Rodecky?
Here.
Robert Swanson?
Here.
Item one on the special meeting agenda is to approve resolution number 2017-80, authorizing a first amendment to a real estate purchase agreement by and between the city of Geneva and Oak Creek Capital Partners LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marx, seconded by Cummings. Any questions? From the public? Okay, roll call vote, please. Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye. A motion to waive the fee, please.
Thank you. Alderman Rodecky, seconded by Marx. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And a motion to adjourn? Is there any new business? Second chance. Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.